Open the meeting for March 27, 2018.
January. Holy crap!
I know. It feels so cold up here now.
You pull you out of the time line?
If anybody's in the audience, yes.
Well, that's Florida comment. It feels cold up here.
If you're recording, you just need to let us know. It's perfectly fine, but you just need to let us know, anyone. Okay. Seven o'clock, Town Planner's Report.
Since the last week, I've assisted various individuals with questions on the proposed Southwood Country Club subdivision. And I've also had conversations with Rob Levesque regarding the proposed Southwood Country Club. Their plans were submitted and they're proposed for to be on the agenda for April 17. Also, a party on number 71 Klein Road, which is on the, almost a section that's adjoining South Loomis. There are, Steve Salvini, the surveyor, is looking at it for a possible estate lot and two A and Rs. And also, I just had a conversation today with an owner who's looking at 772 and 774 College Highway. It's one of the parcels where the, he used to be a physician and he used to live there also. It's south of the hash house, just north of the Country Club.
He's a dentist and he's looking at possibly opening an office.
The thing is, it's an R-20, but he adjoins VR zone. So, a suggestion was, Attorney General does not like spot zoning where you're really, really remote from it. But this is actually adjoining a parcel. There's the hash house is VR zone, there's a parcel of land that's vacant, cornfield now, that's a VR zone. And his two parcels abut that.
Is he gonna live there too? Or, well, I'm sorry.
No. No, it's an R-20. I told him what can happen in an R-20. He's looking at combining both lots and asking for a possible zone change.
Why did they stop using it?
I think it's been vacant for about a year or two years.
If it's less than a year, I mean, wasn't there already a...
I don't think it's been less than a year. I think he's been gone longer than that.
He used to be a physician.
Yeah.
The next lot is the kitchen something and then a doctor's office. From the American Inn driveway.
No, 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 you're too far off.
It's south.
It's going though. No, I know.
It's a country club. There's a hash house. There's a hash house going south, there's a vacant land.
There's a cornfield.
And then there's a house with the doctor's office house.
Yeah.
And he's got a vacant lot which abuts the Southwood Country Club.
Right, so from the Southwood Country Club all the way up to the driveway of American Inn could all be business?
Well, there's, it's a split zone. But, so he would, he's gonna, he's entering, looking at...
Where'd our nap go?
Oh, it's over for medical marijuana, recreational marijuana.
He coming in or not?
He's going to. He's gonna be talking to a design engineer. I don't see him. I see he's here. He's gonna be talking to Mr. Levesque shortly on that.
Okay.
Also, I had correspondence with an attorney who's representing Mr. Miller on property at 95 to 105 Sheepast Road, which, it was a parcel that was broken up back in the late 1990s. And he recently came in last year and he wanted to go back to one mother parcel. And the committee, we signed that. He had forgotten that he had done that and that he had signed a Mylar. So, the attorney is trying to find out. The gentleman, he's becoming a little forgetful on what he did.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Okay.
Seven ten, public comments. Anybody who's not on, or not here for a hearing on the agenda, who has something to bring to the attention of the planning board?
Yes.
Come on up. Just gotta state your name and address, please, when you get up here.
Bob Stevens. Can I just right here say...
You can stand or you can sit. You can do whatever you wish.
That's fine. Bob Stevens, 33 Tannery Road.
You go with the trees.
I was in to see Alan a couple of weeks ago. My comments are about the subdivision that they're gonna have a public hearing on April 17. But I think Alan might have agreed with me that maybe it would make sense, just in his brief, open comments, to air these concerns I have now because there's a possibility that we might convince the applicant that maybe they withdraw the plans and redraw them. So, if I could re, I wrote down, because I'm not a good public speaker, I tend to prattle on, so I wrote some notes. If I could just...
Yeah, that's fine. It's probably worthwhile and Rob's here, so he can certainly listen to that as well.
And actually, since our last, since our last meeting last week regarding the Country Club, I've had direct correspondence with Mr. Levesque.
Okay.
And I know the one contention was the 50-foot non-built zone between your property and his. And he's already going to be addressing that. If you'd rather have him address it...
Well, my, I'm here as an abutter, but I'm also here as a former chairman of this board that worked a lot on the FRD bylaws. And my concern is not just about my abutting property, but the whole subdivision.
Okay.
So, okay. So, my comments are regarding the upcoming public hearing on the subdivision plans for Southwood Country Club. Last week, I met with Alan Sessler, our town planner, to discuss my specific concerns. We agreed that it might benefit the developer in the board if I address these tonight rather than wait till the public hearing. I also shared my concerns with Brian Woodup. Brian did reach out to me, learning about my concerns. And so, he and I are gonna try to get together. We've been exchanging emails and we left, we're gonna get together later this week. I'm an abutter, but I'm also a concerned citizen who's taken an active role in town planning and as a past member of the finance committee and study committees and chairman of this board. I've been involved in the design and approval and also lengthy litigations on several subdivisions. Our FRD open space bylaw allows the developer to use cost-saving, high-density development in return for important benefits to the town. The bylaw specifically says, and I'm quoting, "That houses or dwelling units are clustered together in one or more groups and separated from each other in adjacent properties of permanently protected open space." So, that statement I just read is in the first paragraph of the first page of the 10-page open space bylaw. So, that's basically the foundation, that's what it's built upon, is that open space. And I know this board has given a lot of leeway, where it's 10 pages of requirements and minimums, but this board hasn't gotten any. But simply stated, it calls for protection to abutters and future homeowners through the use of permanently protected open space. And this piece is missing from the plans. And we see that on the College Highway, you see it on the Sunny Side. So, it's not a matter of, we'll have a public hearing to debate the nature of that buffering, which is typically what we used to do on an open space bylaw. How big it should be, what it's, the nature of it should be. It's not even there to discuss on the under plan. So, I'm asking the planning board tonight to consider requesting that the applicant withdraw their application for the reason that the subdivision plans do not meet the requirements for an FRD development. That's it. That's my public comment. I didn't, I mean, I didn't come prepared to go over. I know you've got a public hearings continued, but I'd be happy if at any point the board wanted me to come in and go over specific things. I did meet with Alan. He was kind enough to meet with me on a couple of different occasions and had some chat with Ruth as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments that aren't on the agenda tonight? Seven fifteen, Depot Square, continued public hearing regarding the application to not construct the sidewalks in that development.
Do you get folder?
Sure. Anything that's tagged?
No.
Okay.
It might, it might be in a red folder.
Okay. How are you?
I'm well. Thank you.
So, that, we have it on the record, name and...
Yep. Good evening. For the record, Rob Levesque from our Levesque Associates. Never been here before.
I know.
Nice to meet you, Rob.
Your old chair.
So, we're again here this evening. Based on our last meeting, we, there was a request that we do a site visit, conduct a site visit, to look at the constructed units within Rails End Road, look at the driveways, look at how the grades work. To see if, you know, for the planning board, or members of the planning board, to see firsthand whether or not they felt that sidewalks were logical, doable, would be functional, and what impacts those would have to the current units. So, we did do that. I don't want to speak for the planning board, but I believe Mr. Doherty and Ms. Terry were there. And we looked closely. What I did is I brought a smart level. I don't know if you've ever seen one, but they're pretty straightforward to use. Even I can use one. And, you know, what we did is we looked at the cross slope on one of the driveways. I think it was probably one, or a couple of them. But one we focused in on was about, existing grade was pretty steep. I think it was like, you know, right where we were, it was like 16 percent.
First driveway on the lot.
Yeah. And what we did then is we took the, we took that, you know, it's about a six foot, I think it was about a five or six foot level. And what we did is we kind of lifted the slope to see what the 2%, minimum of 2% cross slope would look like. So, you know, as was expected and as that was illustrated on site, the cut to get the sidewalk in and then the cut to get the, to get back to grade would probably take up most of the driveway to actually make that functional. And arguably, wouldn't be functional because it would be bottoming out. The car would be bottoming out on the way in. So, we kind of looked at this whole stretch and found that, at least, I think, I know I found that to do a sidewalk there would be hugely impactful to those units and the driveways on the way in. Would increase the slopes and would certainly cause, you know, an issue with cars bottoming out, especially, you know, two-wheel-drive cars versus, you know, SUVs. So, with that, I would probably, you know, ask for the members that were there to maybe comment, you know, through the chair.
Also, Rob, if you were to, if you were to change the grade drastically, aren't most utilities in the paved areas?
Yeah.
Would it be a matter of relaying the sewer lines, water lines, gas lines?
So, I'd have to take a, to be honest with you, I did not look at the details of where our... There's probably no question that there would certainly be conflicts. I think at the very minimum, you know, irrigation and, you know, potential communications lines. Beyond that, there are water shut offs, services to the structures themselves that would certainly be impacted, no question. Whether or not the run or the mains, you know, for sewer and whatnot. I don't think those would necessarily be affected, but it would certainly be the services to the buildings that would be affected. Absolutely.
Rob, did you have any thoughts about the visit?
Yeah, it is really crowded up there and it is really sloopy. And it's too bad that things weren't addressed as it was being built properly.
Yeah.
There were residents out when we were up there. Their concerns are their maintenance and ability to keep the sidewalks that are be, gonna be unusual slopes very minimally getting to the minimums to be able to keep the ice and snow off of them, the maintenance of them. We spoke to several residents. This is really hard for me because I'm really disappointed they didn't get built the way it was supposed to be built. Really having a hard time with that. But, these are taxpayers. They own the road. They are going to own the road. They are gonna own this. So, I think that we need to take into consideration their liability and expense going forward over the next 30 to 50 years. So, I, there were some discussions about possibly trying to fit a little bit more sidewalk, maybe up to the first driveway on the right, so that you could at least get up around that curve and see that there weren't any cars lifting down the road. Because if we saw maybe two people stop at the mailbox and block half of the road to get out of the car to get their mail, which makes it even more congested if there's pedestrians on the road. We talked about possibly having a sidewalk cross over to the other side, but I don't really want to see pedestrians crossing on that curve. So, I'm very torn about it. Because I, to me, I'm here for the taxpayers. I'm not here for the developer. But I am not happy about it at all.
There was, there was something that was just brought to my attention this afternoon. And I believe Randy Brown is here. He's been in conversations with Ben Coyle, who's the town's attorney. And he's, he's basically looking, trying to establish what's called a revolving sidewalk committee. Where if a particular subdivision cannot support sidewalks, as long as it's in, within the general vicinity of the subdivision, that money may be used to improve sidewalks coming into the development. So, it was brought, it was brought to my attention, you know, I, I think we're all familiar with that on Depot, the sidewalks, other than what they have been recently reconstructed, are in pretty poor shape. So, it was brought to my attention, and I don't know, Penney, would you like to say something about that, or?
Yeah, I, so this is kind of a, you know, last minute, but, you know, just the last, you know, half day.
There's no nexus. You've gotta have a nexus.
The potential to, you know, in lieu of these sidewalks on the subdivision, have those sidewalks built along Depot Street tying into the rail trail. This is an area that's been abut this property. Other communities have utilized a similar process where they've allowed the developer to put money into, call it a sidewalk bank. The town can utilize that for other improvements in other areas. In particular, those in the vicinity of that project. So, to me, it seemed like a pretty good fit. I just did some kind of quick calculations and we would need about 1,100 feet of sidewalk from the Depot Square condominium to get to the rail trail crossing. I don't have the exact numbers, but I calculated about 1,300 feet of sidewalks that the applicant should look into away from the project. So, similar numbers. It would seem like a fit to me as long as it, you know, met Southwood.
Anybody else from the board have any comments?
What about you? Yeah. Sorry, you got a point on...
No, and I, so, I went out there and I agree with Rob that it's, that left side, I don't think you could possibly do the one we were just talking about with the 16-degree. It's like a 20-foot, 25-foot driveway. I don't, it seems almost nearly impossible to, to design that one with a sidewalk. The right-hand side, I think you could deal with, but it would not be an inexpensive undertaking. You would have to do cut-ins and retaining walls and whatever else and really sort of adjust a bunch of driveways to get up there. That having been said, I can't help but think that this is an issue that has been sitting here for years and years and years without being addressed. And it's, it's, you know, and whether it's the way I look at things, but I, when you come in for a special permit development, you're sort of doing a back and forth about what's being waived and what's not being waived and what's in there. And there's trade-offs and you're looking at it as a whole project. This came out of that process with sidewalks. So, now to come, however many years later, and say, no sidewalks, seems a bit much. And it seems like there should be some trade-off for that. The idea that Randy mentioned that, you know, has been brought up, I, to me, it seems like a feasible solution. I don't, again, I have no idea about the legality of it. If it, it seems like it's been done in other towns. It seems like it provides some benefit to the residents of Depot Square. If you've ever been on those sidewalks right there, those are pretty awful. So, to be able to get over to the rail trail with bikes and strollers and whatever else and I think would be a useful exercise. It's probably worth noting for everybody here, just because, again, this is brought up today for the first time. I heard it this, earlier today, but you've accused yourself...
Correct.
Sidewalk would be going by one of your houses, or one of your house.
Yeah.
And it also would be going by my aunt and uncle's house, which is a couple down from his house. So, it's, it's probably worth mentioning it, it's still, but I, you know, like I said, it seems like a, rather than spend hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to put sidewalks on the right-hand side of Depot Square, this seems like a viable trade-off if it's legal. But, that's kind of where I am. I mean, because I, you know, when I was thinking about it, I was running through whether you could do something like a playground or some sort of space for the community in Depot Square. And it's just, we're at the point now, having done the entire development, that there's nowhere to do it. I mean, the topography is such that there's just no space left to do something like that. But the idea, in this or any other development, that you could make a proposal, come through that process, and then say, no, I don't want to do, you know, 1,300 linear feet of sidewalks that I agreed to do, seems, doesn't seem right. So, that's kind of where I'm at. But, again, I don't know right now the legality of that or whether it's voluntary or involuntary. I don't know the legality either way, so.
Ben called to make a comment that he thought it could be done through a special permit process. Because this is a private subdivision, it could be done through that special permit process.
Through modifying it or something?
Yes.
Is the owner of unit, is it three?
Three. Yes, it's the first one on the right.
Three rails?
Yeah.
So, you're going up, so that very first house, or it's not the first house, but on that curve there.
Crossing the mailbox.
Yeah, crossing the mailbox, kind of. Is that your, your property? Because that, one of our concerns there was if we came up just to your driveway with the sidewalk, that there, they'd actually have to like redo the retaining wall, right, Rob? Like, to be, to be able to get that in there.
Maybe not the, maybe not the existing retaining wall, but I think an additional retaining wall.
Right.
You know, fourth retaining wall right in front would be probably almost necessary.
And just to take it to that driveway, right?
Your landscaping would be significantly changed if that sidewalk was there. I mean, I think to get around that corner, you'd need to retain, you'd need to cut in and put a retaining wall right there. You'd have to adjust the driveway to flatten that out. I mean, yours is probably one of, if not the, most affected property. And it's not, it's not necessarily your property, but I mean, right around your...
Yeah.
Did you guys walk further on up? Because there's evidence, you know, looking at the edge of the road, that cars are bottoming out now on, without, without, once you move the four feet, like the 16% driveway that's existing, is that one of the ones that were, it was gonna go to 25% grade?
Yeah, well, the idea of going beyond these certain couple houses is not even an option. It's so ridiculous up there. We were just trying to get it up past that curve.
Would they change the grade of my driveway?
It would have to be.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, if it stopped before.
Or, no, we could stop before. We could stop the sidewalk.
No, but you can't, yeah, well, I mean, from my point of view, you can't come in with a two-degree or less sidewalk into that driveway. That's probably...
You'd have to return back to the street. You know, you'd have to, you'd have to have a turn.
True, you'd have to cut people off there because that's a tripping hazard.
Yeah, you couldn't go directly into the driveway. You're right. You're right.
But it's a safer place to cross.
True.
Safer place to see the road, to see. That was the only reason.
That one right there.
Yeah.
How far would you have to, how close, how close would you have to get to get past that, that mail area? So, when if a car doesn't stop to collect his mail, does it cause an obstruction?
See, this is it here. So, that's the mail area. So, you'd have to bring it, like, probably to here and then return back.
You couldn't stop a little sooner, maybe?
I don't think you'd be achieving what you're looking to do because there is that grade change. You're kind of coming around.
And that's the curve.
So, there would be enough sidewalk to get past where any car would stop and cause obstruction. The sidewalk would pass that point.
You need to get to the first, second house to really get past the sightlines, to get past...
I reached out, I reached out to Rob, only because I just got this late in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And I literally talked to him five minutes before the meeting and asked...
Every time.
If he could come up with the total length of remaining sidewalk throughout the site, not just Phase 1, but Phase 2.
No, the whole thing.
Come up with, come up with a length and a width and try to put a number on that. I've looked through all of the files and the previous Public Works Director. It was lacking. We were missing some information. The only thing I did find was he was using a figure of $110 per ton for sidewalks. And that, that's the only thing that I could see concrete. It was, it was very difficult to follow the chain of events.
If I could, yeah. So, kind of speaking to the discussion so far, you know, I think we all agree, or maybe it seems like we agree, that the sidewalks are difficult to achieve within the, within the site. There's a couple concerns I would just raise, or maybe just comments that I would put forth. The sidewalks outside of the project would potentially be subject to prevailing wage and would need to be designed. And so, I'm assuming that the process by which that gets done would be through the DPW and that if there is a, an account or a sidewalk fund, that this would just be a monetary transfer, not a responsibility to construct or to, do you follow me?
Yep.
So, you know, 1,300 linear feet of sidewalk within the community is a lot different price than 1,300 linear feet of sidewalk on a public, public road.
You'd get about five feet of public road.
Right. Well, unfortunate. So, that's just one of the items. The other item is, I'm not, and I, and I would have Mr. Lucier speak to his attorney because obviously, there's a homeowners' association here that's involved. The homeowners' association, I'm sure, may or may not, or the buyers may or may not have had certain expectations about the sidewalk, while they do not want necessarily, it appears that most of them, the majority of them, do not want the sidewalk. Their, I don't know what their expectations are in terms of obligations from, from the proponent. So, I think that's worth a review with Mr. Lucier and his attorney. And the homeowners' association, I think it's worth the town reviewing the options. You know, giving Ben Coyle more than a, you know, a couple of hours to look at it. And, you know, we can look at it too and certainly give you those figures that you're looking for. You know, after talking to Alan this afternoon, my goal tonight was to say, okay, if we could walk away knowing that, okay, we all agree that sidewalks on Rails End don't make sense, let's come up with some options. At least we're moving, moving, moving forward towards a, you know, a resolution to this so that I don't have to keep bothering you.
Okay. Randy, has a sidewalk on Depot, I know there's been a study done by the state. Has there been any design configurations on that?
I'd realize that.
There's been a preliminary layout of kind of reconfiguring intersection at the three-way intersection at Depot, I don't know, and Southwood. Which would affect the location of sidewalks. But there's been no design of a new sidewalk.
Okay. Just, Rob, to address the, what you said, I mean, I think it's, the applicant, right, is the homeowners' association. So, there'd have to be, I believe, aren't they?
No. I don't think the homeowners' association is completely active yet. I don't. Is that clear?
Who was the applicant?
The applicant was Depot Square, I'm sorry, take that back. The owner is Depot Square LLC. The applicant was Depot Square Condominium Association.
Right. So, you know, with the application, there would have to be an agreement between the homeowners, you know, in the board. And then, there'd also have to be sort of a separate agreement between the developer and the board. You know, I mean, it would have to be sort of a two-way agreement. Everybody would have to be on the same page. All right. Did you have...
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. One, I'm still concerned about when you get to the end of the road, you can't turn around.
All the way up top.
There's a gate. I mean, I wouldn't want to be the gentleman owner, so you don't have to yell at him because everybody's gonna turn around and drive him.
That's a very good point.
I thought, is there something, how you can deal with that?
I...
Well, see, originally, that was supposed to be a throughway.
Right.
So, there was no provision for it.
Originally, there was a sidewalk too, but...
Yeah, I know. I'm just...
But now that we're keeping the gate, he does no point.
So, he has a great point. I did the exact thing that he had mentioned. I turned around in unit, I think it's unit 17 driveway.
See, I did a 15-point turn.
So, is there, is there the possibility to do a bump out? I would say there probably is on one side or the other.
Is the gate right their boundary line? Is the gate within their boundary line? If they move the gate back.
The gate is within their boundary line. But I, yeah, I mean, I'd have to look closely at this, these areas, but I think that...
On big gain, 10 or 12 feet on the gate, that would give you a turnaround spot.
A little bit of, yeah.
Okay. As far as sidewalks go, if there was a sidewalk fund, would it only be for sidewalks or not? Anything else in town that town spends money on? Do you know?
Depends how the fund is set up through the town meeting approval process.
Okay.
But, how the community, it's to improve pedestrian and bicycle traffic.
As far as the sidewalks go, from what, you know, I've been there a couple times, looked at it, talked to people. It's a horrendous mess. I don't want to own it. I want to be guaranteed this will always be an association... I want to be guaranteed this will always be an association project, or association-owned, and let them deal with the contract and the issues that come with it, because we wash our hands of it. It's just, you know, we didn't make the monster, and I don't want to be responsible for it.
Well, it's never was going to be a town, it was always going to be...
No, but I don't want to make sure it doesn't ever become one either.
There's no way, it'd never be qualifications for a public road.
No.
No, I realize that. There's a reason to criticize your things.
But that being said, the association needs to say in my house, like, the audience.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah. Any other board comments before I turn it over to other folks?
See what they have to say?
Any town officials have any comments other than ones made? Anyway, public comments?
Roosevelt?
I made, Paul Pettit, eleven rails end up in Depot Square. A couple comments, I guess, on behalf of the interim board trustees for the complex up there. A week ago, I came in and I kind of summarized the issues of the majority of the residents up there for not having a sidewalk. And just a point of clarification, though, by the end of that meeting, we really had a truer picture of what was really going on here. And to some of your comments, extremely disappointing to hear that these sidewalks weren't, weren't an option after all due to non-compliance to specifications. The career I have, non-compliance to specifications is a real serious matter. And so, you know, these sidewalks now, as you've all been saying, are both physically and financially improbable. And so, where does that leave us? You have, you have the dilemma of trying to hold contractors to the contract that they're supposed to adhere to, the specifications. And here we are, throwing a curveball at you, forty-five residents or so, throwing a curveball, saying we don't want sidewalks. So, the message that we were, we had discussed and was to be delivered tonight, and, but you're heading in that same direction, which is, which is, I think, a good, a good probable solution is somehow in kind, some kind of in-kind trade-off as to what the contractor would have owed us enhancements, enhancements to the, to the, our project up there. Whether it be somehow trying to find a way to address some of the safety issues on the sidewalk or this alternative sidewalk. We've been doing our homework too, we were real curious about the performance bonds. And we asked for a copy of the performance bond through the town clerk. I gotta believe that section of sidewalks is probably saying eighty thousand, ninety, hundred thousand dollars' worth of work that somehow now have been literally buried through non-conformance. Is that an option? And is that an option that the contractor ought to be thinking and weighing some kind of balance, some kind of equitable trade-off? So, I, I think, I like when you're proposing, I think we would be hopeful that, and it's been mentioned here, that whatever the trade-offs you might be looking at, hopefully the residents in some way, shape, or form have the ability to have some input into it or some thought into that, since it's our, it'll be our home, it is our home. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
The question was brought up about...
Excuse me, is there any names for...
My name is Guy Barbiere, I live at Seventeen, south of McHill Road, it's the very last turnaround. The, I appreciate your thoughts, Mr. Ruxner, but my, I appreciate the fact that the board rendered the decision on the gate. That's more important as far as that goes. But you made mention there are two issues here that have to be decided, or not issues, but the one with the homeowners' association, that of the contractor with regards to the proposal, the trade-off of the sidewalk to the rail's trail. I asked the board to consider two separate things. I asked you to waive the condition of sidewalks, removes the liability for the homeowners' association. And the other vote or consideration you make is if it's contingent upon the proposal and responsibilities of the contractor to offset the expense of the sidewalk with the proposal that was just brought up today. I, what I fear as a personal homeowner in the association, that that liability that might be given to the contractor as a trade-off might be passed along to the homeowners' association. So, I ask that the board consider the proposal for this, for the sidewalk trade-off, but the homeowners' association, as a request of the residents there, that you waive the conditions of the sidewalk, because it's out of our hands right now. The zoning enforcement of the original proposal for the development with the sidewalks were to be part of that is now in play after the fact. It's not anything we did. So, I'm asking you to consider waiving the sidewalks, the responsibility of the association, and any other developments that you would decide with regards to offsetting that is separate and distinct. I hope I made that, from what I understood, what you were saying.
How was it, how was it that the people that bought the units up there didn't realize there was no sidewalks? Did you see a plot plan, did you see a layout, did you see drawings? Didn't anybody see anything like that?
I saw the original document that said sidewalks were going to be installed eventually. The road would eventually have a top coat on it, there were going to be trees planted eventually. All these things were part of the layout on the, and when I looked at the master plan, so I said, okay.
We did too.
So, I said, okay, you know, but I liked the development and, as we all did when we bought there, obviously. And, you know, that's the anticipation we had. Now, we talked about it a year or two ago, that if the sidewalks don't come, it's not a big deal, it's long certain conditions in that. You put a sign at the end of the road, no outlet. You put the gate up every minute, it would reduce the traffic flow. And we, the thought process would be, okay, if you've got those set up that way, the traffic flow would be minimal, as it is now. You know, the signs that don't say no outlets, so a lot of people may be driving through or unaware. So, with the sidewalks, as far as that goes, and people wander about, and it wasn't a condition that concerned us. Or, for me, I shouldn't speak for everybody.
All right. Mike, Mike.
Yeah.
Now, we're just thinking about something. You talked about a trade-off for the, for using the, the fundage that would have gone to the sidewalks to some sort of sidewalking for the town. What if the fundage that was due to the sidewalks was given to an account for the association for upkeep and maintenance of the road for repairs, bowing, servicing?
They're the ones that are lost.
They're the ones that, yeah, this would basically, they would still end up with some sort of a benefit. Maybe everybody might be happy.
You'd have to have an association formed that could do that.
Yeah, well, they have to form an association, get it all cut and dry.
I don't know that the planning board can be a part of a financial transaction between the developer and the association. I'm just saying, I don't know that it's on us.
No, I don't think, I don't think it is on us. But it, but it is, as a homeowners' association, they can have negotiations with the developer.
And they come back and want us to know.
Yeah, and they go back and tell us, we have negotiations, we're all settled, we're happy.
I think, I think, you know, I think that makes a lot of, a lot more, not, not to say that sidewalks on Depot Street don't make sense, they do make sense.
You're not going to get the bang for your buck, like you're talking about.
You're not going to get the bang for your buck, and our concern is that, you know, you'd have to go to town meeting, you'd have to go to design, you'd have, you know, so, you know, it could be years before you see that. And the homeowners aren't going to get any benefit of that.
Thirteen hundred feet worth of sidewalk over there? And you do the math and figure that out for a town sidewalk, you get about eight feet.
And I want to make it clear too, that this project is by no means done. You know, I think people see the units, they're, they're getting close to being done. There's, there's an entire closeout process that needs to happen.
Landscaping.
You know, landscaping, you know, Mr. Lucier is well aware of a lot of this stuff. We've already started discussing it, we're going to start preparing as-built for what's been constructed and putting together punch lists and all that. So, I mean, the sidewalks are probably the biggest, you know, biggest discussion item. But it's not, but we're not, we're not at the end of the project, and Mr. Lucier's here and he's not going anywhere. So, I mean, I think, I think it, I think our goal tonight, again, I think that is a logical suggestion. I don't know if I'm at liberty to really say one way or the other, but I think...
They were listening, they can make decisions on their own, and we can keep this hearing open.
The two groups need to communicate. But to me, that makes a lot more sense, to keep it in the community, let the benefit be with the owners. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that could be done in there to, for improvement.
And, you know, my thought along it is that if this was a public road, that the sidewalks weren't being put in, then to have the sidewalks then put on another public road makes sense. But to me, the trade-off between a private road and a public road sidewalk is not. Because these were never going to be public sidewalks, and that's my only concern about it. I know the sidewalk fund, we were going to do that years ago, we talked about it, and it was sidewalks that were given up on a public road, waived on not both sides, on one side, and then they would put sidewalks over by the school on a public road. This is not.
Here, I mean, my only issue with it is that it's not Tim Lucier here asking not to do the sidewalks.
No, it's not.
It's the homeowners' association here asking not to do the sidewalks.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And then, what is being proposed is to give them a bunch of money for, you know, in lieu, I mean, it's, there's a, there's a disconnect there, I think, a little bit. And there's also some degree of, you know, the role of the town and the safety of its residents and that in play. So, I have to process that a little bit more, but I see there's a little bit of a disconnect in my mind there. It's not necessarily off, but there's...
The chair, there is... I think we're pretty here. We, we are not a formal association. We have never voted to, as an association. There are members that have done diligence, getting in preparation of this petition. The homeowners' association technically is headed by Mr. Lucier.
That's right.
So, he's the one that's petitioning for those sidewalks.
Yeah.
We, as homeowners, do not want the sidewalks, but I want to make it clear, we're not the petition here. It's the developer who's head of the association technically.
Still the majority of the... Is he, is he the sole member of the association right now, or is there...
Legal leader is not a representative.
Please.
Yeah, I think legally, yes.
No, I, oh, okay, I don't know, you know, I hope I...
You know, I mean, that's fine, I just, I don't know, all I see is...
Yeah, I may, I get, a year ago, so January seventeen, I believe, January, February, two thousand seventeen, Mr. Lucier called a meeting of the association, association meeting all of the residents who wanted to go in an informational meeting. And without announcement, without anybody really knowing, at that meeting, all of a sudden, he starts saying, he says, "We're going to elect some, we're going to elect some people to be on the board trustees." So, a few of us, we didn't know exactly here, we're getting into it, we said, "Okay." And we got up, made a little presentation, and everybody voted that was there, there was probably a good forty, fifty residents there, and voted us in. From what we can gather, that, that methodology of voting us in wasn't done properly, it wasn't done legally. So, therefore, that's why we refer to ourselves, and we built that out ourselves afterwards, a few weeks, a month later. And so, so that's why we've been referring to ourselves as interim. And so, the attorney that we've been talking to, has been talking to Mr. Lucier's attorney, trying to bring another meeting together to lawfully vote us in. So, so that's why it's...
So, keep that.
So, let me ask you this, then. So, was there a vote that you were involved in to bring this application forward to the planning board? Okay.
No.
All right.
That's true, I mean, it was no vote.
Mike.
Joe.
So, the Board of Selectmen tonight did move forward with a sidewalk bank that will go in front of town meeting. So, that, that is going in that direction.
So, the avenue is open for us to...
Town council was drafting a warrant article that will amend our existing revolving fund bylaw that will now have a new category for a sidewalk bank. So, it will allow us to bring in funds and accrue them, and then allow the public works to, for those projects, so as to do sidewalks replacement.
Close sidewalks and stuff on the street, huh?
So, that never happened. I thought that happened a few years ago, that not...
No, it was just research.
But you've voted, Joe said yes, and he said no. So, it was never in place before?
Yeah.
We're having private discussions in a public meeting, so they should have the data to talk about and come back and direct.
No, the one, I want to get, let a few people, if they want to talk here, but I also want, if Mr. Lucier wants to say anything, since he is the developer involved, he, you know, certainly want to hear his thoughts if he has anything to offer at this point. I know it's a little bit new to you as you've been sitting here.
Don't say a word, don't say a word. They looked at it, signed it, located it, developed Mr. Mike's unit. And then we realized you can't put a sidewalk in it after it's constructed. And, you know, very typical site. I mean, the signature's on the plan for a special permit for those units.
Any other...
I have a question and also a comment on...
Can we have your name, please?
My name is Chantel Salai, I live over thirty-two, South McHill Road. And so, I'm a little confused, this is new for me. I was wondering, I, I thought sidewalk would benefit the community, I wanted sidewalks, and I understand they can't go in, and it's feasible. But the money that's allocated for those sidewalks, I don't know if that's ours or Mr. Lucier's responsibility to build a sidewalk along Depot, I think that's the town's responsibility. The money that's allocated should go to our community, which is, you know, our conduit community. So, that money should stay within our community, and I'm not being selfish. But I think that there's a lot of galleys, a lot of legal responsibilities that come along with us building that sidewalk. Who's going to maintain it, who's going to uphold it, what happens if there's, you know, slips, falls, whatever, I'm not sure. But I like the idea of, like, a playground, maybe creating a sitting area or a little community area for the residents. And no, not, there's one of the units that's not going up, or you're not, I mean, there's still a little bit of area. Maybe just to do like a little community area, it'll benefit the whole community as opposed to just...
If that's an, and again, we're going to probably wrap this up and continue it to a different meeting very soon. But if anybody has ideas, again, I, you know it a lot better than we know it. When I look at it, I see some difficulties of putting stuff places, but you know it better than I do. So, maybe there is that kind of option to put something that would benefit the community in the actual, you know, development itself. I don't, I just, in my brief looking at it today, have not seen that area that can be used. But there may very well be something there.
That was the very essence of what we were, our, our question was going to be to the board tonight was, can we, or you tell us if we need to enter negotiations with Mr. Lucier to, and Mr. Lucier has publicly made the offer to provide enhancements to our development in lieu of those sidewalks. He's made it publicly on several occasions. Trouble is, what he offered was way too little, and the item was something that's owed to us anyway, in the specific, other specifications. So, but I think if we were, had the ability to negotiate a little bit about what might be a fair and equitable solution between the three parties, between what the board has to establish, what the, Mr. Lucier, and somehow some representation from the association, that's what we would like to see happen.
And then it's just a modification.
But I'm not sure how, how this board, it's your, it's your call, we don't understand that.
I think our call is just for the sidewalk, what do you guys do with yourself between you...
Well, no, we'd have to have a modification of a special permit. Once you guys decided what you wanted, you'd apply for a modification of the special permit, and we would address it.
He could, right, right. So, I guess, minimally, what we were looking for was time to... First of all, we didn't even know whether that idea was possible or even acceptable.
Yep.
And that's a number two, if it was, if you're saying maybe, here's that it can be, there's some time to affect it.
That's what we're doing now.
Well, yeah, but it's a little bit, it's fresh, you know, I mean, it's...
Yeah, this public hearing is just about the sidewalk.
Continue the public hearing, and then have them come back and reevaluate their position. And then we can make a decision based on reevaluation of the decision.
New public hearing.
No, you would, well...
It's just, it's just helping us make our decision whether or not which way direction we want to vote. Still the same public hearing.
It wouldn't, no, it would have to, at a minimum, you'd have to have another public hearing. Whether you kept this open and you decided the sidewalk waiver in this one, and at the same time decided a modification and a separate one. But you can't do the modification in this, he hasn't applied... modification in this, he hasn't applied for it, so he would either have to do a new application, which combined both the sidewalk waiver and the modification, or have both of them open at the same time, and then decide them.
Could I request clarification on that?
Sure.
So we submitted an amendment for the special permit application to, to waive the sidewalk requirement.
Correct.
Which, why do you feel we need another public hearing? I know, I, I know we want to continue, might want to continue, but.
If there's going to be a betterment, putting in a site that may affect the whole site.
Wouldn't that be part of the amendment, wouldn't that just be part of the amendment?
I'd have to, to be fair, I'd have to look at what the application is and just see, I'm just thinking if the application was to, just for the waiver of the sidewalks, you know, I'm not sure.
It probably was general, you probably had.
Well, if, if you're waiving the sidewalk, you're modifying a special permit, you still have that.
But I still think you need to make an application that is broad enough that would cover entirely different changes than the sidewalks, I mean, these are.
We can leave it open for now and see what we think.
They could always apply for a special modification and withdraw from this one, they could.
It was directly related to sidewalks only, but wouldn't this be part of the sidewalk waiver?
Depends on what the, what the solution comes up to be.
Right, I guess so, okay.
No, that's fair, I mean, if it's condition, if it's a condition of the sidewalk waiver, maybe it's tied to it that way, and I.
You guys got to work on your negotiations and see what, just leave it open.
Yeah, no, that's, that may very well, to be fair, all right.
Just make sure that we continue it to weeks when we're all here.
Yeah, that's true.
Except for Marcus.
What's the, we have one next, what's the schedule?
We had one April third.
That's a little too soon.
Right.
It may be here, we're going to be here next week.
And the seventeenth, the seventeenth is going to be a large one.
Seventeenth is the flexible subdivision.
The two subdivisions coming in.
Oh, that's the seventeenth.
So you have to go to May first.
That'll be the problem, actually.
Bring your lunch around.
So let's, another.
Can I read it for real, then, though?
Yep.
We have been doing this over and over and had a continuation, and get me this information and get me that information, and do you guys come up with a plan between our engineer, Tim's engineer, the constructor, owner of the development, and you guys, to be very specific what we need, so we don't come back again and have another continuance because we don't know all the information?
Well.
I get to finish that?
Yeah.
So, to be fair, so, to be fair to the planning board, there's issues that are directly related to this resolution that need to be worked out between Mr. Lucier and the homeowners association, I think that's clear. So I, my goal tonight would be to get an answer for you guys as to whether or not the planning board wants to waive the sidewalk requirement with conditions generally, you know, and if that's the case, leave tonight, let Mr. Lucier work it out with the homeowners association, come back with a proposal.
And I, I just, I would say, I don't think it benefits anybody for us to say, okay, no, the sidewalk waiver, and just let you guys go on your way. I think keeping the discussion open and seeing if there's a negotiation and a, and a solution that can be worked out is probably better for everybody, I think, but that's just my opinion. All right, so, do I hear a motion to continue this hearing?
How long do you guys want? It must have given us time.
Is it possible to have a straw vote, or, you know, or a vote on the waiver subject to conditions or something, just so we know what we're working with, is that reasonable? I don't know.
Well, I, I'm hesitant to do a straw vote, but I mean, I think you've heard most of our opinions, but.
Why the question, Robert?
You know, the, the negotiation between the association and the developer could take the length of time, because there, there could be a number of issues that are related to this and not related to this, and it may fall together, and to quote somebody on the board, you still hold a bond, so if we, as taxpayers, come before the board, and we talk about some of the open issues, so again, I would ask, if, there's a lot of negotiation that we're talking about here, we don't have a formal board, and we're kind of, it, it's a touchy catch-22, if you will, if we vote as an association, now we have what we feel less leverage than if we, but we don't have the technical aspect to negotiate, so what I'm asking is, you made a very powerful statement several months ago, you hold a bond, so if we act in good faith between the developer and the quasi-association, we come back to you with a, a list of things that, again, may be related to the sidewalk, it may not be, it could be all part of an, all encompassing negotiation.
So I'd say two things. One is, I have the feeling that if I asked you what's outstanding right now, you could give me a pretty lengthy list of stuff.
There would be.
This sidewalk would probably take up sixty percent of what's out there right now of the bond, so I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that the bond necessarily means a ton right there, but, but that's without me knowing all the open items. The second thing is, I, I appreciate what you said before about waiving the sidewalk and then dealing with the other stuff, but it's not, I don't think it's responsible on our part to just grant an unconditional waiver and leave that, and so I just, I mean, we can certainly vote and, vote on an unconditional waiver tonight, and I, I think from what I've heard about the last thing, that the answer's going to be no, and then you'd have to reapply, and once you guys got everything together, and, and maybe it goes simpler, then that's fine, or we can leave this open and sort of, you know, deal with it if there's, if there's progress.
Maybe there's a better way to ask the question, is there anybody that has a fundamental problem waiving the sidewalks with conditions?
I don't. I don't think anybody here does, I don't, yeah, I mean, I.
Thank you. So that gives us enough, enough to take away.
Yeah, maybe I didn't ask, yeah, I didn't mean to.
We don't want to waive the sidewalks without conditions, we're going to do it that way.
I didn't mean to vaguely answer it before, Rob.
No, no, you're, you're.
Rob is a lawyer.
So, so I guess.
On the other hand.
So with that, I would respectfully request a continuance to the next appropriate meeting, November, some, something maybe in a few meetings like.
We have a couple of meetings in April, and then May's pretty much shot.
No, April is shot, May's not.
May twenty-first is.
May first is fine.
Let me ask you, as the.
May first would be fine, yep, but.
As, as person coming before us on the Southwood Country Club, what are your, what are you, what are you thinking as far as?
No one's going to show up for that one.
That's starting on the seventeenth, obviously, and seventeenth, a bunch of stuff on, so it's tough to do it on the seventeenth.
Yeah.
You don't want to do it next week.
I think May first, I'm happy to put it on for May first, but I'm guessing that the Southwood Country Club at least carries over till that next meeting at a minimum, before there's any kind of.
I think, I don't, we don't want to push it too far down the road, if, if we.
Happy to put it on May first and let it.
That'd be great, that'd be great, I think, we, if it looks like it's going to be crazy, then we can always request a continuance.
If you guys aren't ready, then you can.
May first?
Is everybody going to be here May first?
Yes.
David's not.
I'm just parking on your back.
April third.
All right, so, do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to May first at what time, Ruth?
Seven fifteen.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstaining?
One abstention.
Fair enough, okay.
But I just have, Rob, can I just have, the gentleman who spoke before and said, I recommended it come to the next meeting, I did not do that, I said, first of all, the plan should come through, the board hasn't even seen the plans, let the board see the plans first before there's any objections to the plan. Secondly, we've been in discussions with Rob many times, and, and there's already a resolution for that, and it, the gentleman was incorrect, because it doesn't have to be open space, basically, it says there has to be a, at least a fifty-foot width, which includes trees, which will be kept in a natural state, and basically, it's called a no-gill zone, and I brought that to him, but he, he professes that he wrote the, the law.
He can make a public comment, he can make a public comment.
But he wanted to.
I, I had no inclination of bringing it to a vote, I mean, I'm happy to if someone makes a motion, but I, my feeling is that Rob sat here and listened to it, if he felt the need to amend or withdraw the application, he can certainly do some.
Talking about Southwood Country Club, it's a preliminary plan, and that's, that's the discussion, no, Southwood Country.
Fair enough.
With, with the application before the board, it didn't seem appropriate for me to discuss outside the public hearing, so I'll look for that.
I was glad, I was glad, it was the same thing. All he did was a public comment.
Correct.
Thank you, Rob.
Have a good night, Rob.
I'm proud to see you stick up for yourself.
Seven thirty? Seven thirty in planning board time, we have the continued public hearing for the marijuana bylaw. I did, but we'll do us first, and then.
You want to give me a depot script first?
I would love to do that, yes.
He called, he called me too, and I said, I can't do, I can't talk to you.
Thank you.
You'll have to clear the room.
Folks, we're still having a meeting, if you could carry it on outside, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Good job.
We got news on my wife.
What?
Not as bad as they at first thought.
All right. So, who wants to give me an update about where we stand, because I wasn't here last night.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would be glad to provide a little history.
Read it back to you first.
Brief history.
Read history, just so we.
We had seven people at the public hearing when it opened, and two of them were the select board, and, anyway, we went over the draft from January, and there was some comments, and, and we considered a couple items that were in, in the draft. The planning board, a couple of the participants had some suggestions for adjusting some of the language, and so I have changed some of the text, and everyone should have a copy of the amended.
Can you tell us where you changed it?
Oh, yes, this is dated three, twenty-seven eighteen.
I know.
So, the first change is under C on page two. I did two things. The second paragraph, which says marijuana cultivation, production, and processing may be permitted in the agriculture and conservation district with a reference, and on a minimum tract of five acres in the succeeding residential zone R forty and residence, should say residential, zone R twenty.
Okay.
And originally, that paragraph was down below under section D as three, and I felt it would be better up above, and that way, it wouldn't confuse section D, which talks about the overlay districts.
Okay.
So, that's the one there, and the suggestion from the board, planning board, was that it be written out, so we specify agricultural and conservation district, residential zone R forty, and residential zone R twenty.
All right, any other changes to this from the original?
I added the date for the map, because that hasn't changed, and it doesn't appear that it's going to be changing, so that's December nineteen, two thousand seventeen.
Anything else?
On page three, item two, this is, been modified, one thing that was changed, went from five hundred to a thousand-foot separation, comment from the planning board, this corresponds to.
That's F, that's F two, right?
Pardon? Oh, sorry.
You said F two.
Page two, yeah, item F two, on page three, okay? And looking at the map, we really need to specify the separation in, in all, in all of the overlay zones, and as originally written, it only specified the separation in the off-site marijuana dispensary, which is the retail sales of recreational marijuana, but as you see in the map, there's a couple brown areas that are adjacent to College Highway, and also, there's internal roads in the brown area on the north, north section, so I rewrote it to say, no marijuana dispensary or establishment, so that means medical and recreational shall be located within a thousand feet to be measured in a straight line from the nearest points of each building or storefront of another marijuana dispensary or establishment. And I added storefront because there are, obviously, in town, some small shopping areas, strip malls, where you have a big building, but you have storefronts, so this would cover both standalone building and then storefronts in a strip mall area, all right, so those were basically the three items.
All right, so I'm going to, because they've already had a long night, I'm going to turn it, I know that Joe Geady is on the select board, and Carl Steinhardt have some comments, so I'm going to let them offer those up now.
How are you doing?
Joe, good, how are you?
Good.
Welcome to sit, you're welcome to stand, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Whatever.
How many you got tonight?
Twice as many people downstairs.
Oh. Are they not coming down? Are they doing?
Well, we got to get back.
Doing a soft shoe or something down there?
We have been sent by the board to come up and appear before you had the suggestion of town council.
Okay.
So we have a document that was drafted, originally, the selectmen had instructed by a vote, town council, to draft a ballot question regarding some issues on the zoning and general bylaws prohibiting the operation of non-medical marijuana retailers within the town of Southwood, so there's going to be a ballot question, so the, the deadline's coming up for the town clerk, so the town attorney came in with a draft tonight that was listed as on our agenda, and, you know, he, he put forward the summary of, of what the vote would do, and this exclusions and so forth, and it was, in no way is it going to be conflicting with the efforts that you have underway through this hearing process. So within his ballot question description, there are two ways of approaching it, one is with a, an approach where there would be a zoning bylaw that would follow up on the ballot question, and a general bylaw that would follow up after the ballot question, because the ballot question is going to be on the election warrant, which will be the second Tuesday in May, and then town meeting is the third Tuesday in May, so what happens is when the warrant, when the election warrant is posted for the election of officers, it also puts ballot questions on it, so that gets posted that day, and at the same time, when it's posted by the constable, it also posts the special annual town meeting warrant, so there's a whole series of warrants that are all posted the same day, so the ballot question would be the second Tuesday, and then the town meeting would be the third Tuesday, so, so because of the way they're all packaged together, all these things have to be done in a certain sequence. So, the draft that he came up with, you know, has a zoning bylaw section after it, that has to be referenced, and is a general bylaw, so there'd be the ballot question, and then a week later, there'd be one or two other votes, which could, could be a zoning bylaw and a general bylaw, well, you know, we all understand from a zoning bylaw point of view, we would not be able to, you know, make the vote, refer to you, and have something done before town meeting. So what he suggested we do is, the selectmen would proceed with a separate bylaw to also implement the ballot question, because that's, that's the requirement on a community that has already, where its people have already done the initial vote to permit that other types of recreational, so the only way you can revisit it is with a two-step process. One is the ballot question, and then, and then a follow-up with town meeting. So because the, so because of the process being done by that, town council has said for the zoning aspect, what we could do is, he suggested that this little zoning bylaw language word portion could be read into the planning board's meeting tonight at your hearing, for incorporation into the new zoning bylaw, and it could be an additional section, and he could work with you on where it would be appropriate and what the wording would be that's in draft form to incorporate it into this final document that your board and Allen have been working on. So that necessitated the board authorizing Joe and I to bring this submission up to you and have you enter it into your record as written testimony, so I have that, Mr. Chairman.
Which can be stripped on the town meeting floor, should it?
Right, depending upon the outcome of the ballot question.
Right, if it makes a moot, if it's.
Exactly, okay.
So, there is that issue. Like, if we have our bylaw and if it gets passed, can't he make a motion on the floor at that time based on the vote?
No, I think it's probably easier to put it in there now, you know, from town council's point of view. Because then that would be the posted document that's going to the public as opposed to adding something in later on that could put the moderator and the town attorney into a position of trying to determine whether or not that potential amendment fits within the general intent of the bylaw. And generally, attorneys are very averse to wanting to do that. So, you're always better off to have that section or that language in there at the outset.
It never goes well when someone tries to do something on.
Right. And also, as a general rule, you know, a lot of things can be amended. But generally, amending a zoning bylaw that is already coming with a recommendation after a hearing's been held and you've closed it is more problematic.
The easiest way to do it.
Well.
Because why I understand, we have to get you a warrant article by Friday.
All right. Well, you're going to give me a draft. So, the draft you're going to give me, you'd just be giving permission to town council to incorporate the written testimony that he's already given you.
So, he'll take up the ball.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't have to.
I'm sitting there going.
You don't have to word process anything, Alan. He would do the inquiry.
Well, no, I'm just asking, those are just the questions.
No, it's a process issue. It was so urgent that the board made us leave a hearing to come up here to be part of this meeting.
So, it doesn't make sense to do two warrant articles?
Well, we would still be doing.
One without it?
Technically, it's free, based on the vote.
Yeah, well, there's going to be.
No, but zoning bylaw. I mean.
Right. No, he felt, there's not enough time for you to do your zoning process, to do a separate zoning bylaw. But the important thing is for us to bring it up to you and give it to us written, you know, submission for testimony.
I can proceed with what I already.
You can proceed what you have as long, and then your board, when you're getting ready to close your hearing, could say that we also authorize town council to incorporate, to modify our draft. He's going to do it anyway. He has to approve it. Form. He has to put non-substantive numbering to incorporate in the town code. It's all of it.
But how does?
Their ballot is only going for recreational sales.
How is it going to? I'm just, I'm trying to process it and I'm not, it's a step missing in my head. So, I apologize. What's going to end up on the warrant with regard to the zoning bylaw? Is it going to have this in there as a sort of possibility? Or is it, how is it going to?
It's going to have, if you're so inclined to accept it as written testimony, which we've given it, is words along the line that town council put in there under the zoning bylaw section would be a section or in some wording of an existing section that you're about to submit as proposed.
But this proposal, this proposed section is only applicable if the ballot goes one direction.
Right.
And it's not applicable if ballot goes the other direction.
Right. So, it would be, so then, at that point, then it would be amended to take it out as opposed to more of a confusing issue to take what it is.
So, if the ballot question doesn't pass, our bylaw goes on.
The way it is. Oh, it's on the warrant anyway at that point. It's already been posted. It's on the warrant.
If this won't be voted on, this won't happen if.
It would have amended on the floor. Yes. Which is easier than to do.
It's easier to take it out than to put it in.
Right.
Way easier to table.
Especially when you're explaining to people, you know, what happened a week earlier now necessitates this.
Right. Okay. And will it be, I assume we can explain it in the sort of section of the summary of the zoning bylaw and say, you know, explain what this is. This is a conditional section that may.
Alan's already got a draft part and the other part. So, that could certainly, that could certainly be amended by town council to also give you your explanation.
And when you read that, what did you take out of that?
It's pretty straightforward.
It is pretty straightforward. No, that, we can't get simpler than that.
How is it going to be presented on the ballot? So, the first one.
I'm just thinking about the five people who are actually going to read this.
Yeah, no, I got that.
You know, you just got to make sure it's clear to them that.
Well, depending on how the whole goes, they're going to tell you, "Why is this even in there?"
Right.
You know, so what pool put this in?
Right.
Well, because if it went the other way, then.
And that's going to be explained in sort of the little.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, that's fine.
That's your job, Mike.
Right. And, well, no.
Correct.
Well, it'll be, there'll be, there'll be the recommendation and explanation by your board. And then there'll also be the selectmen there at town meeting. There'll be one or more members of town council. Will be on the floor.
Yeah. Okay. No, I think that makes sense. I mean, it seems like the simplest solution, cleanest solution.
So, if people can read through it, they see it beforehand and if it gets struck, it gets struck?
Right.
Right. No, that's easy enough to do. And everybody's seen it. It's just explaining it, what it is and what the process is. Again, for the five people who actually read the details of the bylaws.
Right. And basically, that's seven. So, if it, if it.
I won't be there.
If the recreational. That states that you'll still be able to do the other. You're not eliminating everything in town because recreation passes.
Right. And we're still going to have, we have another warrant article going on. That's going to give the selectmen the ability to tax the recreational at a higher percentage. There's a local option on that.
Oh, yeah, because there's so much money in it.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
So, we should probably tweak our bylaw needed to.
Right. You just need to make sure. And you attach it to the minutes so that it's all in there. So, when it's submitted to the attorney general's office, that it was something that was duly submitted.
So, the part that circled is what they want put in here somewhere?
No, Mr. Coyle is going to do that.
Is this for us?
Yeah, that is your copy.
You don't need it. Okay.
I'll need a copy. Al, you can just give me a copy tomorrow.
Mr. Coyle is going to put that in.
I know. I just, I find that it's not even allowed.
Okay.
Well, we need.
But just give me a copy of the document tomorrow. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thought you said tweet, not tweak. It was like, I don't use Twitter.
What are they, what are we adding here?
Nothing. We're not.
No, no, no. It's in the record. We have to know. We have to be read in public.
So, let me, yeah, so let me just read so that we know, so everybody knows what it is.
Okay.
So, putting aside whatever the bylaw says now, we're going to, when we put it on the warrant article so that everybody sees all the possible language that is out there, put in a section that says, "Non-medical marijuana establishments" as the heading, and then says, "Non-medical marijuana establishments," in quotes, "as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, including marijuana retailers shall be prohibited." That says, "with the Town of Southwick." That probably needs to be changed. Probably in the Town of Southwick. "Provided, however, that this prohibition shall not apply to marijuana cultivators, independent testing laboratories, and marijuana product manufacturers." So, the warrant article will include this. There'll be a section that explains it and says that if the ballot question says prohibits the non-medical marijuana establishments, this will be included in the zoning bylaw. If it doesn't, if the ballot question is not successful and it's not prohibited at the town meeting, this will be amended to be removed from the zoning bylaw. So that everybody can see what the text is potentially. And then we can just amend it if we need to take it out. So, that seems like the cleanest way to me, but.
And our overlay map would have to be reflected in that also.
Correct. Okay. So, any board comments or questions about the new draft?
It seems reasonable to suggest that would be under section C, permitted uses. I think that language would fit in there quite nicely. Section C, permitted uses. Because it's saying it's not permitted. If the warrant, if the election ballot question, you know, avoids. So, I, you know, that's just Alan, my thought. Because in there, under permitted uses, we do explain where things are allowed.
When is, this is going to be on for the next meeting, correct? And then we have to submit it? Is that what it is?
No.
No, we have to close the hearing this evening after comments. And we have to vote to either recommend it, not recommend it, or be neutral.
They told us eight, we had it in my, when we were talking, last time I was here, we were talking about April.
Yep. It's due the 30th. It's due this Friday by close of business.
So, we've got to get it to him tomorrow.
That's why we met tonight.
That's why we were.
No, that's not why we met. That's not originally why we met tonight. We met tonight so that we could do three meetings in case we needed it. But when we originally had said it, it was going to be, we had a meeting on, what, April 3rd or something like that? And it was supposed to be due on April 4th. That's the last time.
Yep. They changed, they changed it.
All right. That's fine.
That's why I always question because if they want, how to rewrite that.
All right. Well.
Yeah, no. If we, I think as long as we have our recommendations in place, but I just want to.
Well, let me just. See, the one thing you have to do, which is why this is annoying to get at this point, but is that you got to make this consistent with everything. I mean, you can't.
I'm looking at the file.
It is. It's not necessarily.
Another section of the bylaw, totally unrelated to marijuana. And usually, the permitted uses are one letter and the prohibited uses are another letter, a different heading. So, I think that if the ballot question passes, it would, I think that the bylaw as written would have to have, you either have to be able to amend it on the floor, put it in, or pull it out.
We're going to have it in there now.
So, if we're going to have the prohibited and then we're going to pull it out if it's, okay, so then.
But then you have to put it at the end.
If you look at like 18522 on page 13534, I don't even know which bylaws it is, which is the wellhead protection. It lists permitted uses under a different letter than permitted uses. I just, I think putting them under the same, unless you're going to label it uses and have it be.
It says permitted uses, item C.
Right. So, but what I'm saying is you can't then underneath there, under permitted uses, list prohibited uses. You could have C be uses and then have one be permitted uses and two be prohibited uses. And then we would strike the prohibited uses if the ballot question does not get passed.
So, you don't think town council will put it to order, put it to form?
I mean, they may. But, I mean, I just.
I don't, I, I, I mean, from my standpoint, I would agree with that. I don't, you don't put prohibited uses under permitted uses as a heading. Just, it just doesn't.
So, we'll let town council decide where to put it then?
Right. They'll probably just renumber it and it'll get renumbered accordingly on the town floor kind of thing. But, yeah, you're right. Town council needs to figure out where to put it in there according to looking at our bylaws. But we should try to keep to form the way our bylaws are written, I think. It depends on who's working it at town council. Ben Coyle's been doing this for a while though.
Yeah.
It's going to be, I mean, the vote's the vote, but it's going to be closer.
Considering the amount of people that come, considering the amount of people that have come to meetings. We're going to have a lot of questions.
I know. But this, this thing, it really depends on making sure people go to the ballot.
Right. So, that's what I think. I think prohibited needs to go first. So, prohibited needs to be C and then.
Not the county. You guys have to make sure you go both.
Right.
Yeah.
Have a question on the floor.
Yeah.
Hold on one minute. Let me just.
Were you looking at 18537.1?
Yeah, I just picked any old one. It was wellhead.
Because one of them, like 18537.1, they just prohibited first and then they say as of right.
Yeah, there's different ways of putting it.
So, I think you just put in C, prohibited, and then D, permitted, and you kind of go along.
It's make it easy to strike.
Yep.
And then if it strikes, then town council.
Yeah, they renumber it when they print it.
All right. So, here's, and I just need to go through, think about this. But, I mean, this thing talks about medical and recreational and the various things you do for each particular thing.
Yep.
So, then you have this whole three-page bylaw. And then you potentially are going to have a section that says, "Non-medical are prohibited," which makes moot all this other language potentially that is specifically in this thing, right?
Oh, no.
No, it said sale, retailers.
Retail sales only.
Marijuana retailers only. So, the only one, but you're right on page.
What is the difference between a registered recreational marijuana establishment and a non-medical marijuana establishment as defined by General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1? Aren't they the same thing? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, not.
Medical recreational.
No.
No, this is a non-medical marijuana establishment.
Right.
Is that not recreational?
That's recreational.
Okay. So, what's a registered recreational marijuana establishment versus a non-medical marijuana establishment?
Same thing.
Same thing, different wording.
It's the same thing, different wording.
So, now we have this whole bylaw that talks about RRMEs, none of which is actually going to be allowed by this section that is later on in the bylaw.
No, it's the OMD that's not allowed by that section. The off-site marijuana dispensary, which is a marijuana retailer.
Their thing should use our definition. I think we amend their thing.
What, so I don't.
The ballot question is just on retail sales of non-medical.
Okay. So, that. Ben Coyle and I are going to have a discussion later on.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, so to be fair, I just don't know. I didn't really pay attention to what the ballot question is. And so, I'm reading this and I'm seeing it's prohibiting non-medical marijuana establishment. So, that's wrong. It's prohibiting.
Retail sales.
Retail sales. Non, it's recreational retail sales. It's the only thing that it's prohibiting.
Yeah.
Correct.
Mike? It's hard, it's hard to pay attention though sometimes.
As far as. Mike, you just said precedence. You're a lawyer who admitted you didn't pay attention.
I think that town council is going to get it, hopefully. We've just got to make sure that they keep it, that we don't lose the gist of what we're trying to do. We've established what we want and we're going to vote on it today. If the ballot question fails.
I think we have to vote on what the select board gave us to.
He's already read it in for record.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're going to have to make sure, we can, we can always tweak it.
Take that all the way.
You won't recognize when it comes back from town council.
Something has to be fixed about it. It'll be fixed in a call.
Six pages long.
If there's some wording, if there's administrative stuff.
Well, they create a terrible problem for us.
They did.
Well, it's the timing. That's the problem.
Our leaders have been.
We got to do what we can do and that's it.
Yep.
Otherwise, we don't have any local control.
That's true.
Still have a commenter from the audience, a commenter from the audience.
Yeah, you can comment while I'm trying to process this. Mike and Alan.
You referred to the map, but the map should be somewhere where people can see it.
It's right here in the tables.
Okay, there.
There you go. You want one?
Well, we have, we have two, we have two zoning maps. We have two.
That's yours. You keep it.
Yeah.
It'll be at the, it'll be at town meeting.
Right.
I think that we can't find it on the website easily. You can just find the one dated from like May 2010. And I had to ask, well, what zones are we looking at?
Yeah, no, this is, this, it wouldn't be on the website yet because it hasn't been adopted. It's not official. This is not. They can't, we can't put that on the website till after, but attorney general approves this 90 days after town meeting.
There are large formats over on the two tables that you're welcome to look at.
I think, I think, you know, the planning boards may want to consider maybe another option here. There are 100, I think it's 18 pages of state regulations that are. Thank you. 127 of final regulations. There really isn't necessarily a need. If you look at the bylaw, where we're allowing people who have five acres of land, you're basically opening up the whole town for someone, you know, granted, depending on land. So, again, I brought this up in our committee meeting. I don't necessarily, you're, we're overpolicing something almost. And quite frankly, you guys are not very informed on the law. And you're going to create a bylaw on something that you're not that informed on. And it's, and as a resident who's interested in maybe entering in this industry, you're creating a lot of blocks for somebody who doesn't have a lot of money to enter the industry, which is what is. you're creating a lot of blocks for somebody who doesn't have a lot of money to enter the industry, which is what is happening in Boston. They're creating the, the, the entry point as low.
At the state level, and I take offense to that, I don't know my town zoning. I know what this town has wanted and done in this town. We have the right to have some of it, okay? So, we were asked by town meeting last year to create a law, that we were gonna have a moratorium and create a law. That's what we're doing.
I understand. There was no regulations in May, or the regulations that were in place and were the concern of the select board. And before this, this board, I think you were the, the, the lead on that, when it, when the, the bylaw first, the, the moratorium first got voted here. There were no regulations. There are so many regulations now. I mean, it talks about air quality, it talks about fencing, which is a security concern. Talks about all these things.
Which is why we don't have it in our bylaw.
I understand. I was, we, I was through the whole process of that. But, this bylaw is restricting a lot of residents from entering the market with the five acre restriction. And I would like to see that removed. As long as the, the resident is creating and meeting the state regulations, I don't really think it's, I don't think it's advantageous to, to reduce the entry of the industry. That's where I'm at right now. I mean, you guys do whatever you want.
Yeah, okay.
You can even have a regular farm on the five acres.
Now, I'm trying to buy neighbors just so I can have some cows.
Any other comments?
Jessica Thornton, you all don't know me as well as you know Mr. P. here, I'm from Granville Road 352. Just in coming to this meeting tonight, I can see the acrooning that kind of is happening between both the planning board and some of the people who are not necessarily on the board but in this process, as well as now with the deal that you guys have to deal with. Selectmen coming in here telling you, hey, everything you just worked on for the past 10 months, it's great, we're gonna throw this at you next week. As a resident, I find this language prohibitive. I see some of you, and Ryan brought it up again, and I'm sure you're tired of hearing from him, but as an individual myself, I'm extremely excited about the possibility of this industry. But I'm an individual, I don't even own an acre of land. I don't need more than 100 square feet of space to be a marijuana product manufacturer. I don't need to cultivate it on my property. I don't need to have fencing. Maybe I'm part of a craft cooperative in a couple of years where a farmer who lives in Southwood actually cultivates and I do something within my own property to turn it into something that's more palatable to somebody who doesn't wanna smoke it, would rather congest it, be in an edible form. And I would have to meet any state requirements, but you as the town should not be attempting to limit individuals and potential small business brokers within this community by the language in this bylaw. I think the five acres, I mean, you can't even ask a small farmer to participate in this industry with a five acre limit. And based upon the five acre limit and the zoning, that, I mean, at best, you guys might get one facility within town. And it would probably have to be located over in Hudson, which means it would be a large corporation, would not be a small business. It would not be a town cooperative of farmers and individual micro businesses. You are, I understand you have to do what you think is best for the town and you have a lot of input from residents who may not be on the pro side of this issue. But as an individual, as a resident, as a voter, as a mother, who would like to see this town do well, to limit yourselves in this industry by throwing something arbitrary as a five acre agricultural limit on something that you don't even, you don't need that to even grow the max number of plants that we're allowed to grow by the state law. That's crazy. I'd have four and a half acres surrounding my house to protect 12 plants. It doesn't make any sense. And frankly, considering the fact that you have other groups of people trying to influence this process, don't make it any harder, don't make it any more restrictive for yourself, because as you see now, you're having to make amendments to things and, well, how do we word it for this and how do we word it for that? That's just my opinion. I would ask you, the planning board, to think about that, especially considering you're now gonna have to go back into your word processor, sir, and make some edits to this proposed bylaw. And as some of you doesn't really know much about government, I would suggest that you make a bylaw that is established as is and make a bylaw that is established if for some reason the select board gets their continued moratorium on retail sales.
That's what we're doing. We're creating the two things. I do, I do wanna, I wish you were here last week when one of the selectmen actually did speak about the small. If, if it's gonna be in your house and you're growing plants, you probably will fall under the home occupation. That, we kind of, you know, like that, if it's inside your house, that...
Well, it depends on what you, you're, it depends on what you're growing up for. If you're growing up for personal consumption, it's not...
Is it in this, it's not in the bylaw, that's all.
That's just, you're looking at...
But it already is in the...
It's a bylaw.
We're, we're looking at this entire book and making sure that these three pages don't muddy and fit in with the whole thing. I, I agree with you in a lot of ways, but there's like a couple cans of worms that we have to be careful with, including the other farmers and, like I just said, if, if I wanna actually have more than 30 chickens, I have to purchase two acres from my neighbor. So I am, there are restrictions in life and I, and I just, we have to make it fit this whole, we have to make it fit and we can amend it later. I mean...
We just don't, I think that as a resident, I should, I don't wanna have to come and fight for it to be amended if it's being added arbitrarily from the beginning, especially when you're considering the fact that we're not just talking about cultivation.
I know, I know that. And I, I guess, I guess my point is you are restricted by... It just happens, this is just one subject. There are a lot of things you can't do in your home. You know, and, so I just, you know, but there are a lot of things you can't, we don't care, so I mean...
So, uh, let me ask, I guess the, this, was this five acres in the original draft or is that what changed?
That was in the original draft because it's based on the AC zone and being able to access residential through the AC zone as a successional process in our Chapter 185.
Okay, so what, let me ask this.
The beast within.
The one thing I don't know well enough, and Ryan, you can certainly clarify it for me, is whether, what's the regulation on the personal use?
What personal use, like what...
I mean, is there, isn't there a, isn't there a...
The maximum is 100,000 square feet.
For adult in the house or for household.
Part of it, six plants per adult, 12 for household.
Oh, allowed.
Okay.
So, I guess my question is, is that prohibited under this bylaw?
Oh, I don't think so.
Is that prohibited under the cultivation part of the bylaw?
No, you can grow 12 plants on your porch.
But it's, but, but part of the language, at least the way that it is constructed to me, is that you're applying that five acre limit on any marijuana-related business. So any entity in the future doesn't even necessarily have to apply on the property. If I wanna be a transfer, I wanna get a transfer license, like the liberal ladies college.
No, doesn't apply. Doesn't apply, doesn't apply.
This isn't going to, that's not.
No, no.
So long as there's no product on it, or this...
It's the cultivation, it's the cultivation, production and processing.
Processing could be, we went back and forth on our committee meeting about what that really means. Because if you're, if you're, if you're creating concentrate or baking, you're processing marijuana, or are you not? I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know what that language is. And again, it just reiterates, there's a lot of things I don't wanna know, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of things that were not very clear throughout the whole process till December.
Right. So I think, the, the point that Doug made last week, but you weren't here, was that the way the home occupation thing is written, don't make changes to the outside of your home. We don't actually know whether you're making money or not making money. You have a business, you, you know, you're not changing outside your home. You know, I mean, I, if anything, the processing would fall under the Board of Health. Like if someone had a home kitchen, a bakery, I mean, we have those. We have people that bake cakes and have businesses.
Yeah, but now this is gonna fall on, this is gonna be under the building inspector to enforce it.
Yep.
Are we gonna get to the point where we can vote on this tonight?
We have to.
We, I don't, we don't have a choice, but I, you know...
You don't hope there's no law in town. They could, the only thing they can do is extend the moratorium.
Which we would have to write that Warren article. Which is another option.
Alright, let me, let me assess this. Is there any other issues, either on the board or from the public, as, other than the five acres? Is that the, is that the issue?
There's also an issue, the bylaw states that you cannot, if you're a dispensary, sell like ancillary products, like, like if you wanna sell, at least the way I understand it, again, so I make sure. It doesn't allow like if you can sell like paint or rolling paper, I'm sorry?
I thought you were the expert on all the laws.
No, I'm not a lawyer. I don't.
Because you're telling us how we work.
No, he's, he's talking about, he's talking about...
Which section do you think, Ryan, which...
I'm sorry, sir?
Which section do you think, do you have it in front of you? I'm sorry, do you...
It's Section C permitted uses.
The may not include other businesses or services, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, um, I mean, like, I think, if, I know if you go to Neta in North Hampton, I mean, they sell vaporizer pens. They sell rolling papers there. You know, I'd like to not see that being restricted. Also, um...
But why is that different than related supplies?
It says related supply. Again, I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure.
No, that's fine. So I, I guess my reading of it, and I, you know, I've only read this a few times, I wasn't on the subcommittee, but when you read registered recreational marijuana establishment definition, it seems broad enough that it talks about, you know, related supplies or educational materials, which seems to cover a lot of what you were just talking about. I think, you know, again, that may play out differently and certainly can be addressed later on if it, if it doesn't get read that way, but that is my...
Well, and the May is good. It doesn't say shall, it says may, which means there's...
And we were trying to address yoga studios, other activities that, you know, would go on inside a building that were...
Like a massage.
Not related.
Oh, yep.
Marijuana might be occurring in it.
Ryan, underneath off-site marijuana dispensary, on page number two at the, at the top, it says serves only to dispense processed recreational marijuana-related supplies and educational materials.
Okay, so that covers that?
I think so.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think that might have been added in, um...
I think it was after a few months.
And that's in accordance to the state law, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. Then that, that would, that was it for me.
Just so you know, I mean, the only thing I'd say about the May, those mayes are gonna be read as shals, just in that permitted use thing. Those are shals.
Related supplies is a pretty...
Those are gonna be, those are gonna be, shall only...
But it all has to be done through a special permit, inside plan approval.
I agree, but those will be read as shals.
We'll have to watch, see. Because there are definitely some shals in here, but...
No, I agree, but I, you know, I'm, that's just my opinion, but when I read that, I'm betting those mayes are read as shals. Okay, so, um, let's have a very brief discussion on the five acres, if anybody wants to have that discussion.
A little insight on five acres from the state regulation standpoint. The maximum growing canopy allowed is 100,000 square feet, which turns out to be 2.3 acres. So the maximum canopy that you could have on a property would be 2.3 acres. So to look at having some buffer of some kind, five acres doesn't seem unreasonable.
So that's interesting. So two, which is a two and a half acre, so what if it's... I can find some ways around that.
Well, no, is that, is that an cumulative number?
Cumulative?
Well, if you're putting up multiple greenhouses, now is it, is it a total number of square feet?
The maximum, the maximum canopy area, and I don't know if it has to be contiguous. I don't remember.
Or under one ownership or...
I don't know. I don't think it has to be. Is 100,000 square feet have to be contiguous and under the same owner?
I mean, I just don't think we have enough time.
I think it's in the, uh...
Percentage probably makes the most sense, right?
It's in the guidance, it's right here.
I think you designate, you designate grow area.
But we don't have enough time to clear that out.
It's right here.
Oh, I agree. I don't think it's gonna be.
Okay, it's in the guidance on page six.
There should be a limit. I'm not sure it has to be as high as five, but there should be a floor at a minimum, $2.6, two acres or whatever.
Page six, page six of the guidelines to the municipalities.
Sorry.
Page six, explains it right here, of the guidance, guidance document, okay. Page six. Each licensee except the Craft Marijuana Cooperative may have three licenses, but the total canopy authorized by the licenses added together may not exceed 100,000 square feet.
Okay, so...
So it could be non-contiguous, or it could be contiguous. I'm just giving you a reference that 100,000 is 2.3 acres.
So the buffer, a buffer around that for neighbors and whatnot, makes up that difference between that acreage and that acreage. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, I'm saying five acres is not unreasonable.
The state, the state is putting a restriction on how much. I, I honestly, I really don't, I don't have a problem with marijuana. But I can just see the tobacco growers coming to us and saying...
I don't disagree, but I...
So now they can have, grow their marijuana unless it's five acres, but I can't grow tobacco. I can't grow corn. I can't have pow, but they can grow their marijuana. So that, that's where I'm coming from. I don't have a problem.
Maybe it should be, the acreage should be mentioned to a cultivation...
We just felt it was reasonable to have it fit together and flow.
On this particular property, you are looking to cultivate, grow marijuana, then you need to meet the agricultural...
Growing corn or tobacco too.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying.
So if you wanted to put a difference in your bylaw to indicate that if you are attempting to have a grower's, cultivator's license to grow, then it should have to meet the five acre requirement.
So marijuana cultivation...
If you do anything else with the product other than growing it, it should not matter how much distance it should be.
So let me paraphrase what I think I heard.
Yep. Take those.
It's, the, the thing that it currently says marijuana cultivation, production and processing on yada, 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 more than five acres. Your specific issues is with the terms production and processing.
So if it just said marijuana cultivation may be permitted only on a tract of five acres, you would be more comfortable with it?
Absolutely.
I see where she's coming from now.
Yeah, I get it.
You see where she's coming from?
Because I could come to you as a small business, you know, do this.
You heard that well.
I, I'm going to take my own fried product or I'm gonna buy it from the local Southwood Recreational Marijuana Dispensary, take that back to my home, turn it into butter, make some really great cookies and go, there's a, a three-day festival at the old Boy Scout camp in summer. I have a Google box, give you guys your cut and go to the summer house and buy my kids some ice cream cones afterward. That's a big process we need to be thinking about here. Don't limit me based upon my identity to want to start to grow.
Look at page five in the municipal guidelines.
Page five municipal guidelines.
It describes a marijuana cultivator.
Right.
May cultivate, process and package.
Right, so cultivator license could do both the growing and the processing.
Okay, but we're saying that, we're not saying that a marijuana cultivator, by definition, needs five acres. We're just saying the cultivation's part of it. So, page five.
No, they don't have it.
They don't have their guidelines.
In the guideline, it's providing a whole marijuana cultivator, but we're not saying that in this, we're just saying this specifically. Okay, so, so you want to establish then is that the cultivator has the right to grow and process their own products. I'm asking, I'm not asking, there are hundreds of other marijuana-related businesses that you guys have covered here that have absolutely zero to do with cultivating, packaging. I can go to the store and buy a product that fits in my purse and do, and that doesn't need five acres.
That's what I'm thinking. I believe that's what you're saying. I'm, I understand what you're saying.
So processing, you're just taking, taking the product, and did you say you were gonna take cookies to the Boy Scouts?
I would never take it to Boy Scout, if you are a Boy Scout leader over the age... I would never take it to Boy Scout, if you are a Boy Scout leader over the age of 21, sir, I would gladly give to you.
So you're a lawyer, you decide what kind of words you like there.
All right, so you're, you're, you're taking a product that's already been, he grows it, he sells it to you, you buy it, you turn it into a cupcake and take it to Aunt May.
That's right.
And that's a license for this.
So you want us to take just the word "processing" out?
And maybe possibly...
It doesn't do anything, though, doesn't do anything.
Processing and production, so growing would still be five acres.
Cultivation eliminates the five acres.
That I can understand.
If all you're looking to do is...
Because you don't need five acres to take chicken to make scrambled eggs, let's call it restaurant.
I might need to raise them chickens, I might need to raise them cows, but I would say, why can't I go buy the milk and the eggs and go make a great omelet?
All right, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
But I, so I don't...
We're, do you know what we're proposing down here at this end? Down at this end of the table, we're proposing, under C, second paragraph, to strike the words "production and processing."
Right, but it sounds like from at least the guidelines, and I'm looking at the regulations right now, that cultivator includes processing and packaging.
But we're not saying, we're not saying a marijuana cultivator has to be on five acres, we're just saying the act of cultivation, so the one-third of what a cultivator can do, the act of just the cultivation.
Growing it has to be five acres.
But I'm saying a marijuana cultivator, in quotes, that term, at least in these guidelines, says marijuana cultivator may cultivate, process, and package. And so they, they, that incorporates all three of those things into marijuana cultivator, so...
They're doing that on more than five acres, and she's buying that cultivated stuff, and she's going to take it...
But they cannot cultivate, they can only process and package, unless they have five acres.
Repackaged, they're going to get it packaged already, so they're going to get it from a cultivator who cultivated it, processed it, and packaged. She's going to pick up a little package of pot leaves?
I want enough props to grow me some plants, and I'm going to buy it from there.
I don't, no, I understand what you want, and I agree with them, that they, I, I agree with, I don't disagree with anybody. What I'm trying to do is get it so that it actually works, and I don't want the argument to be made that cultivator includes packaging and processing, because that defeats your goal.
I, I think maybe instead of striking the production, processing portion, you have a, if a cultivator is looking to cultivate on the RME or OMD, the requirement is five acres blank.
There we go.
That is...
Now we're really going to be screwed.
And putting, you're putting the onus, the requirement, on the cultivation aspect, not necessarily the word "cultivator."
I'm okay to just go with cultivation.
All right.
We solved all the world problems.
Are all the jet skiers...
Doug, what is, what does a marijuana cultivator do?
You can only jet ski.
So, here, here, Jessica, we'll show you what we're...
Mr. Mowgli approaches the table.
Do you have a, do you see a problem with this?
What?
I'm not a lawyer.
I didn't even stay at a Holiday Inn Express.
So the, the issue is that if someone bought leaves, flowers, flowers from someone else, an OMD, right, you said he'd actually have to purchase it from an OMD, oh, whatever there, and took it to her house to, to make processing.
The shelf in the Boy Scouts.
She should be able to do that on less than five acres, so we're discussing possibly crossing out production and processing, and just saying that you have to have five acres to cultivate, to grow it. Kind of along the same lines as what you were saying last week, because what you do with the flower in your house, that you purchase it something.
Well, you can have less to turn it into something useful.
And have a...
I would just like to say, why is growing being vilified so much? I guess I'm confused why...
You're not being vilified.
I'm just, I'm asking.
You weren't vilified.
I saw that meeting.
No, I was very interested in that earlier.
Hey, Ryan, here's the, I think here's the easy explanation, is that you guys shouldn't, you know, marijuana growers should not be, get some benefit by growing marijuana versus people growing tomatoes, or corn, or tobacco, who have to grow it on five acres in this town. So I, you know, whether that whole structure should change, that's a different story. I, I, you know, I think that's an argument, that's a, that's a bigger argument than what we're dealing with right now.
We can do that next year, if you want to change the cultural restriction of process, it doesn't necessarily, isn't...
I don't disagree with what you, and I think if you take out production and processing, that probably, looking at the regulations, that probably covers it.
It allows a lot of people to do a lot of things.
And then if in the future you want to address how many acres we need to grow stuff...
So we strike out two words, three words, okay, and a comma. Um, all right, I'm doing it in ink. And we're going to let the lawyer renumber all these, put it to form, reletter it.
Any other comments?
So you're taking, you know, production and processing?
Yes.
You can buy flowers somewhere and make cookies.
All right, any other comments?
No, I'm good with it.
Everybody good?
Let's take it.
Everybody good? All right.
We're falling into home occupation anyway.
You've got to close it here.
I'd say, obviously this language will probably change slightly based on counsel.
The lawyers will tweak it slightly, but...
So, but as a general matter, the substance of it, as it's here, including the provision we talked about from Town Council, based on the ballot question, to be included somewhere, probably as Section C, and removing production and processing. Uh, do I hear a motion, well, first of all, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Forgot about that.
Let them finish the word, will you?
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, standing, all right. Hearing's closed. Uh, do I hear a motion to submit this draft bylaw, obviously to be approved and tweaked by council, not tweeted? With a positive recommendation, um, uh, at least that's the substance of it. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, standing, okay.
And we're going to include that, uh... We've got a decision here, you guys have an important decision. I can't.
Yeah, I sent it to Secretary Antioch.
It's your decision.
About noon time today.
Today?
Just the gate, right?
Yeah, we don't have to vote on it tonight.
What decision do we have?
For the gate.
For the gate.
Okay, we'll vote on it now.
I don't get anything from you today.
I got found where the gate is, I want to vote on the gate.
Did we already vote on it?
Yeah, I think it's late anyways, I think we should probably...
You didn't vote on, you didn't vote on the text.
So, I don't, I don't see, maybe I missed it, maybe I deleted that, so I don't see it.
Hey Ruth, at the last meeting, you voted on the gate, or you only closed the hearing.
We closed the hearing.
We didn't vote on it.
We didn't, we voted on it, but we didn't do the decision, the decision's here, now...
I, I think we should push it off for the next meeting, both the minutes and the decision.
Yeah, because...
It's already late, they're not going anywhere.
Don't close until I get back.
Why?
That's the British salute.
Then let's make a motion for the minutes.
I, I don't care, it's, it's, you can do...
Mike, just saying.
And we can wait till next week.
The minutes, I wasn't here for, so if you guys want to do the minutes, that's fine with me, I couldn't care less, I haven't looked at them, so...
All right, let's get out of here.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 20th.
Alan, who's going to second it, or...
Who's seconding the minutes?
I'll second.
Hutzinger seconded the minutes, I made the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, standing, okay.
Do you have a signer? Sign this one?
For your bride, not for you.
I was going to say, it's not my birthday yet.
Glad you got some, glad you got some things to say, that's awesome.
I mean, it's perfect vase for a smiling day.
That's awesome.
It's a big piece of hope, for sure.
We didn't vote on it.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Marcus made a motion.
Here you go, you need another one? Oh, the math?
And makes a positive recommendation for the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, that I got, I heard that.
All right, we out of here?
Yeah, do I hear a motion to close?
So moved.
Close what? To end the meeting. All those in favor, second it. All those in favor say aye.
Dave Sutton seconded it.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right.
Guys, on behalf of my wife, I want to thank the flowers.
Give her our regards.
I had a closing today, I didn't want some beer, I didn't.
You had a what?
Your first one?
Closing where?
I sold the house back.
Nice.
Actually, both of, the other was...
I will take a look at that.
Going to have lots of homes selling Southwood.
Uh, you sent, Ruth, hey Ruth, you sent it to Lori? You sent those to Lori?
Yeah.
Does he have a, he has a hard copy here?
I have a hard copy here, I saw that. If for some reason Lori doesn't have it, I'll have it, I'll email you tomorrow.
Okay.
Isn't this fun, David? You've had some of the hardest stuff to work with. Can't believe...